Okay, I've been reminded that it is 6:03, so we'll commence the meeting and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with which it stands, one nation, with liberty, justice, and all.
I believe all members are present, with two by remote, but we're all present. Next item on our agenda is public input. I do want to note that virtual attendees may email input to comments@interlakes.org. If you have public input, if you would rise, say your name and make your input. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Just confirming, Mr. Martin, you don't have any? Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th meeting. Moved by Mr. Billings.
I'll second.
Who said I'll second, Craig?
Craig.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes, any corrections? Looks good. All those in favor?
Aye.
You people can raise your hand, we can see. We're going to get two.
Aye.
Okay, looks to be unanimous. I, oh, Charlie abstained. Okay. Current bills payable. Motion to approve the minutes, the payment of bills manifest 3,009.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Charlie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark. Any questions on the bills?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Go ahead, Craig.
I guess, Trish, the boiler payment for Sandwich Central School, is that the last one that we'll see, or?
Sorry, I apologize. We've paid a total of $147,000. Balance of the purchase order is 24,848.
Any other questions, reference?
Thank you.
The manifest. Seeing none, all those in favor? Looks to be unanimous.
Thank you.
And we're going to want some signatures, aren't you, Trish?
Yes, and I've given the packet to the.
Okay, good. I think last time we failed to do signatures.
Do you want me to start the whole packet, Trish, or?
Yes, please. Those are ones that you've previously approved, but I don't have signatures for.
Okay, continuing on the agenda. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, report. A, enrollment.
You have in your packet an enrollment summary. We did break it down so that you also have a comparison from last month for the various pathways, the in-person, the virtual, and what we are calling the hybrid, some students who attend virtually and in-person. We have had some movement from last month. We have specifically 10 students shifted from virtual and nine students shifted from hybrid to the in-person. We had published some dates as to when these transitions would typically happen. These were decided they were in the best interest of learners, so it was important to bring them into a pathway that best fit their needs. And so I'm not sure whether or not we will continue to have that level of migration between the various pathways, or if things will start kind of stabling out. You know, that is concerning if we shift, again, if we don't have enough shift from one of the virtual pathway classes, it just, it does create some concerns. You know, we are trying to hold classes at 15. We are at that ability at the moment, but that is certainly changing. In addition, every time we migrate somebody to the physical in-person, it does have an impact on transportation as well. So I want the board to be mindful of that, that that is something that we just have to watch and be mindful of. We also did see an increase in homeschooling. Some of those students are students that never enrolled, they were not enrolled, but they have become homeschool students within our area. So they are not necessarily students who have migrated out of the school district, they are, I believe, some students who've migrated into the area and have registered their homeschooling with us. So that is in terms of enrollment, and as you can see, we are, our enrollment is down. I do, again, suspect that we've had some families decide to hold on kindergarten this year, so I think, you know, it's a little difficult to predict what next year will look like. Are there any questions?
But Mary, based on our conversation the other day, we probably would be prudent to expect a little bump.
Absolutely, and we are actually, Mr. Bryant, we have talked about doing a five-year average without including this year, because it's just, this is such an anomaly, and I think it will skew us from a budgeting standpoint. So we are trying to be mindful that, looking at what we typically would have.
Any other questions, Mary? Okay, going on, B.
So just to give you an update, we have a few things to update you on relative to our opening and continued opening of the school year. We have recently had a meeting this afternoon of the COVID-19 decision-making team, which is really more of an advisory team. There are some things that we hope to discuss at the board level this evening, and maybe they'll fall under fall athletics. But as we look at activity in the area, certainly Bellknap County is becoming more concerning. And we are fortunate to have, you know, some very skilled people who have a public health background in terms of looking at data, and I think this is certainly a period of time that we all need to be really mindful of and be cautious of getting caution fatigue or COVID fatigue. There definitely seems to be more activity occurring. We did have, this past weekend, on Saturday, was informed that we had played a, an area school in athletics and that a student on the opposing team had, had tested positive. We did have our team sit out for today in terms of, you know, they were certainly accessing schoolwork, but we had them stay out of school for today while the Department of Health and Human Services completed contact tracing. They did come back and say that they felt like there was no concern and that students could resume activity tomorrow, both being in school as well as from an athletic standpoint.
Mary?
Yes.
I thought I had heard earlier that the student that tested positive was not an athlete and was not on the team.
I believe you were, that was a different school district that was being discussed?
Yeah, that was.
The reason this one became a concern is because we had competed with, you know, with the other school in competition. And so, you know, we also had, you know, we have people who are participating in, you know, types of traveling leagues outside of school. There was, you know, some concerns in the area of hockey last week, as well as another school district that we have played in sports, that individual was not an athlete, but they did have a confirmed case. So it just, it definitely felt last week, I would describe it as COVID-19 was knocking on our door. And so I think it's just something that we need to be really mindful of. I just, I, I don't think there's a decision about this this evening, but something for consideration. I'm very concerned between Thanksgiving and the start of the year. I think people's, are going to naturally probably increase their exposure over Thanksgiving. It really becomes a challenge with, when people have been in contact with people who have been in contact with people, and it just, it becomes, you know, try, it's like a knot you're trying to undo every day. I worry that that knot's going to be pretty big right after Thanksgiving, and I worry about that impact on staffing as well as student attendance, and that may be me worrying too much, but I think it is something to just be considering. Is there, you know, is it wait and see if the, the data supports doing something, or is there a point to say maybe it makes sense to be proactive and plan for it? Again, I don't think there's a decision this evening, but I just want to at least start bringing awareness to that concern. In addition, tonight, I think maybe under the fall athletics, you know, that conversation, do we continue with fall athletics right now? How far do we go? I have provided you with a schedule. Is it something that needs to be considered, either shortening the season, or there are no, at this point, playoffs scheduled? That's still very much up in the air. I don't know what NHIAA will ultimately do about that. There was talk at one point, or surveys, about potentially playing outside of your bubble, so you're moving around the state. There was some talk of maybe playing within what has been the bubble for the season, but that would probably take us into the second week of November. So, you know, is it the kind of thing that maybe, maybe we're getting close to that sweet spot, and it makes sense to limit some play? And I certainly don't want to, I don't know if you want Richard to just do that agenda item at this stage, or wait, or?
Actually, you go, go ahead and do it now.
So maybe I, I've lost Ms. DuMay. Ah, there you are, thank you. So you do have a schedule in front of you. So today is the 13th, and we did not play Belmont today. And I don't see any other Belmont games scheduled for this week, but we did not play Belmont. They did have a confirmed case, is my understanding. And so we did play some other games this afternoon, we had Laconia scheduled, so they are primarily, the rest of this week is Laconia. The end of the week, Saturday, is Moulton Borough. I believe some of that is an outdoor game. Next week, we are scheduled to play primarily Kennett. Kennett has had a positive case. My understanding is that that is a very small circle and probably does not impact athletics. And then it looks like we have two additional games the end of the month. We have the JV football on the 26th, and that looks like Laconia, and we have middle school football at Plymouth Elementary on the 28th. So I think that there are certainly a couple ways to go, finish the season on the 28th, recognizing that playing sports puts us at a higher risk. Another option, you know, could be playing through the end of this week and letting kids know that we're kind of wrapping up the season. Play next week as well, and maybe the end of the month goes away, or there's a limited number of games at the end of the month. I do know, I did hear at least from one parent who has expressed the concern that maybe it's time to rethink athletics, and it was a parent of an athlete. You know, I think, you know, Ms. DuMay's and Mr. Courier, you know, I think we're, we're all, we're concerned. You know, we want certainly give kids the experience. I would like kids to have some closure, so I think, like, finishing the week would be the earliest, I would say, to, to just pause. Charlie, sorry, Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mary. What do our volunteer public health experts suggest in this, based on the data that is coming in now?
The team could not come to what I would say a consensus, was the bottom line. So we have principals on that, we have our two public health individuals, we have three board members, Mr. Billings, Mr. Hanson, Ms. Merrill. There is teacher representative, there are the school nurses, and I would say it was mixed. I think I'm representing that. There was no, my hope was there'd be a recommendation to bring forward to you for consideration, but it did, it varied. I will say what, and I think I am appropriately representing the two health experts, public health experts, is, you know, they're concerned that the data is shifting, that there is a shift. I think, is that a fair assessment, that the data does seem to be something to be mindful of at this stage?
In particular, the state data, and in particular, Bellknap County.
Correct.
But, correct me if I'm wrong again, I think the data also said none of those in Bellknap were in schools?
Correct.
And it is, Charlie, sorry, that none of those cases, and, because we did see a move up, still within the mild range, but pushing the limits into moderate, but none of the positive tests or cases were in school age.
In schools.
Children.
Within the week that we're playing this week, the Laconia is correct, and then next week, Kennett, there is an active case in Kennett, but my understanding is that's a very limited. And what I would say is Kennett, there, you know, the county data is, is good in that area compared to Bellknap.
Yes. They did bring up that Bellknap and Carroll County and Grafton County were all really good. I think the positivity rate in Bellknap County was .6.
For the PCR, yes.
Right, was .6, and the ideal is to keep it below 5. So was still pretty good in, in those respects.
At least pretty good, and I remind us that when we were making the decision back in the summer about sports, we were seeing measurably higher numbers.
I, I think with Kennett, though, they said that that person that tested positive was diagnosed on the 8th, is that correct, of October?
I think that's correct.
Yes, that's my memory.
That is correct.
Days, really, before you know if it's spread, so I would be very cautious about going to that school district right now.
So new cases over the last 14 days per 100,000. Bellknap had 46.2, Carroll 20.9, Grafton 20, 26.7. You're considered minimum at less than 50. The Harvard indicator, level of community transmission, Bellknap was 4.5, Carroll 2.1, Grafton 1.6. They consider it, you're in a, a green zone if you're less than one, a yellow zone if you're less than 10. So all of those fall into the yellow, and the yellow is more, you know, continue contact tracing and, you know, social distancing and things along that line. Total number of new cases in the last seven days by county, Carroll had, I'm sorry, Bellknap had 19, the previous week eight. Carroll had seven the previous week three. Grafton had 10 the previous week 16. There were zero schools in Bellknap with active cases. One in Carroll, that was, that's Kennett, and then nine in Grafton. One is the Bernice Ray School, Dartmouth College, Lebanon High School, Lebanon Middle School, Mount Prospect Academy, Plymouth Regional High School, PSU, and Waterville Elementary. So just to share that data with you. And it, it may be, you know, continue to play for this week, and the team looks at it again next Monday, and if things don't, so there are games scheduled on Monday. You know, maybe the team could come together on, you know, Friday and see if something looks like it's changed quite a bit, and just keep monitoring it multiple times. I, I think realistically, I don't know that it makes sense to try to do fall championships of any kind. I think if, if we can get through the season, I think we have accomplished something. And I, I think, you know, what Ms. DuMay's has shared is that the students have been appreciative that they've gotten to play, and as disappointing as it would be to lose that opportunity to compete, they do feel like they've had a chance to play. Just, I'm looking at you, Sarah, to make sure I've summarized that correctly. Okay, all right. So, so that could be an option that the board says, just keep monitoring it, you know, maybe on the 16th, maybe, maybe rather than trying to, you know, we can try to just see what members of the team can come together and take a look and see if our public health officials would run the numbers again, and we'll check in again on Monday, and maybe we check in midweek next week.
I like that recommendation.
Yep. And likewise, we've got, what, four weeks, five weeks for Thanksgiving?
Yes, yeah.
And it's going to be very important to monitor, which we do.
Yeah.
Are the numbers leading up to it?
Right.
I'm not yet convinced that the rotating bubbles
Yeah.
bring us to shutting down, other than for a day or two, which might make sense.
And there's a board meeting on the 27th, so it'll be interesting to see, you know, what's happened with the, the numbers at that point, but it is that constant monitoring, I think, is the key.
Nancy?
Yeah, I, I just wondered, what kind of, what, what are the athletes? How are they being educated about this? And I'm just interested in knowing how cautious they are, what they know, particularly volleyball plays inside, right?
Yeah.
Football and soccer outside, but volleyball players are inside. What, what messages are the kids getting, and how cautious are they being?
So I can turn to Mr. Courier to maybe help with that?
Yeah, I, the, the coaching staff that we have for our volleyball team, Coach Mattson specifically, has done a tremendous job of working with her student athletes regarding the precautions and the procedures of which she needs to, so they can compete. If you were to go to a volleyball practice, they are following all of those guidelines and procedures that we would do to enter, not only for students or staff coming into building every day, but they redo those before they head into practice. So temperature checks for all the student athletes, the questionnaire, there's a conversation that happens every day with them, there's, there's individual check-ins. That on top of when there's a volleyball match, when there's an actual game, the, the amount of precautions that are taken, not only from the coaching staffs, but also from officials, to the point that there, and Mrs. DuMay can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are three actual volleyballs that they use. If one volleyball comes off of play and hits somebody in the stands, and hit, you know, I can accidentally catch it, that volleyball is taken out of play because someone who is not a player touched it. It is sanitized, it is by someone else who is separate, and they have sanitized their hands multiple times while another volleyball is put back into play. So, you know, masks are worn, there's, if you watch their club, they don't huddle, they huddle six feet apart. So I think that, that is just the things I can tell you that I've seen, you know, from a visual standpoint during matches and during practices, and also there's the conversations that she's having constantly, that I, and I know she's having in my own conversations with, with the coaches.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will also share that during, for the outside games, we were having spectators, if they were six feet apart, they didn't need to wear a mask, and it became very difficult to navigate that because then people were close together and you couldn't tell if they were family or in the same bubble. So we did mandate that all, everybody had to wear a mask, didn't matter how far apart you are, but you're, if you're going to be a spectator, you're going to wear a mask, and that has helped. It's made, being able to look at the crowd and have a sense of what people, you know, are doing, you know, in a more meaningful way than trying to figure out if people are related. So, you know, it's, we do not have athletes wearing masks when they are playing, that has not been something, you know, I think there are places, you know, that's been debated, but, you know, when you're working out, that's difficult, and so, you know, not something that we are requiring. Certainly football and soccer, our close contact, we do have the good fortune of being outside, though, that helps. I am very concerned about winter athletics. I think, again, that's probably not a decision for this evening, but I do think it is something that will need, you know, considerable consideration. We do, for winter athletics, we only have one sport that is an outside sport, and that is Nordic skiing. Hockey and basketball are indoors, and that is concerning. In addition, you know, those are close contact, which is a little different than volleyball in terms of, you know, being able to feel like, could we run that in a manner that we could feel is responsible? So that is an area that I think will need some conversation.
Okay, do you, would, do we have consensus with the board maybe to, as what Mary said, that allow things to go through to Friday, I'm assuming, correct, Mary? And then at that point, we, we can do a reassessment, and certainly, I don't think we have to call a board meeting, but I think Mary can make a decision at that time if there's a concern as to whether or not we complete the season next week. Is that okay, Mary? Because I don't know.
So what I was, I think if we can get the COVID, you know, team, the advisory group together on Friday, take a look, try to, you know, see if it looks good for, for the rest of the week, and the beginning, you know, Monday's games, and then the team is scheduled to meet on the 19th and can look ahead as well. And then what I would say is maybe, maybe we even do a midweek check-in to see if we should continue. So my thought is, the COVID team meets every Monday, if we add an additional meeting this week on Friday, and maybe we do an additional meeting on the 21st. That might provide us.
In a sense, you're saying, take it day by day.
I think if we can meet, you know, twice a week to see if that, and if we need to meet more, I will invite people to do that.
Charlie?
So what I heard was, our goal is to just try to finish the regular season, we are not going to participate in any playoffs or championships. And we will just continue to use the data to guide us at the appropriate interval.
Correct.
Great, thank you. I think that's prudent.
Okay, any further comments from the board? Okay.
I do have, just again, under the COVID-19 update, you do have, in a paper clipped copy at your debt, or at your seat, there is just a breakdown, people have wondered, you know, certainly COVID-19 has not been inexpensive. We have a breakdown for you of where we are at this stage. Certainly, it is a concerning number. We do have, the CARES Act has offset some of those costs, as well as Title II and Title IV grants have offset some costs as well. We have been practicing, really trying to monitor our spending since the beginning of this fiscal year, and we certainly are monitoring that closely. You know, I think there will certainly be some costs that can be shifted, you know, our field experiences, we won't be doing those overnight trips and so forth, and that certainly will provide some, some relief, as well as certainly with athletics, if we are not doing playoffs and things like that, that does change some of the transportation. So we are, are watching it. We aren't really enough into this school year to have a complete picture yet of where we stand. That will be something next month. We will plan to bring what we, where we currently stand with our current operating budget. But we wanted to at least share that with the board so that you have a sense of what the costs are that, you know, to get school open, to get the virtual pathways and to keep us operational.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
Sorry. In your breakdown of the costs you have as the first item, virtual pathways, salaries and benefits. Could you give me a little bit more depth on that?
Absolutely. So this, this is really, you know, we had originally thought V-Lax would be our virtual pathway. And then, you know, we pivoted to build our own. So this is, so when we think remote, it's people who are physically in person in school. And maybe we have to close school and that group would go remote for that period. Virtual is, it's a whole, think of it as almost a whole separate school that we're running in terms of, we have teachers that we were able to shift from the elementary level. So those were costs that were just shifted. We have, really, it's the over, overture that we need in contracts to teach an additional section of algebra, additional section of chemistry. Those are, that's really where that cost is coming from.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Trish. Financial report.
Thank you. In your packet, you have attachment four, which is the end of year summary report that is based off the Department of Education Form 25 that has been filed. I will go through the report quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions. So this is for the year ending June 30th, 2020. We did complete a unique and very challenging fiscal year in good financial standing. After we moved to the remote learning environment in March, we experienced some savings that helped to offset over expenditures in special education facilities and curriculum. The board voted to retain $300,000 to reduce the assessment for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. So that moves forward an entire year. The board encumbered $230,000 to help offset unanticipated expenditures for this current fiscal year. And we were able to return $333,580 to reduce the tax assessment for 2021. Some of the challenges we faced within that budget was special education, legal services and facilities. Food service fund increased its fund balance to $48,000, largely due to the additional subsidies received for remote meals. We also had more operating days than we normally would. We have averaged about 176 operating days for food service. But because we could go through the end of the year, we had 188 days this year. Normally, we serve about 113,000 meals. Over those 176 days, we served 117,000. We did pursue grant opportunities whenever possible, and we received and expended $642,500 in state and federal funding sources. The majority of those were for special education grants with the least restrictive environment. Page three is the general fund equity change. So we started total fund equity at $415,000. Our revenues, our expenditures, our total fund equity, as we stated, that we reserved for encumbrances, $323,000, that includes open purchase orders, and we retained $300,000. So returning 333. Page four is the savings and over expenditures, a little more detail. We had savings in health insurance, field experiences, regular education supplies, co-curricular athletics, vocational and library books and supplies. The $121,000 under school board services was the amount that was voted at the prior fiscal, prior annual school district meeting that the board chose not to use as a salary. It was tech position that was put back in, the board voted not to use that, so we held it forward to be returned as part of that fund balance. Regular transportation, athletic transportation and other transportations. Places where we saw a lot of overages were things that we knew overall last year. Special education, curriculum, books, serious legal services and buildings and equipment. Page five are summary, detail of the general fund revenues. Predominantly, we saw increases in revenue in catastrophic aid, which is for the prior year's special education expenditures, Medicaid reimbursements, and an unanticipated foster placement tuition. Page six is more detail of the expenditures, but I've gone over the expenditures pretty much in detail regarding overages and underages. Page seven is a listing of the encumbrances that were approved by the board, as well as open purchase orders at year end. Page eight is the detail of actual expenditures for special education programs as required each year in the annual report. I include it here. You can see that overall, the net cost of special education comparing fiscal year 1819 to fiscal year 1920, saw about a 6.4% increase in net cost, around $326,000. Page nine is the health insurance analysis. As I had stated earlier, we did have significant savings in health insurance. That was driven by two factors. The actual rate came in 3% less than our guaranteed maximum rate, and we had a lot of changes within subscriptions. Page 10 is a slightly more detailed of food service that we talked about. And we increased our fund balance, as I stated, from about 27.7 to 48. Page 11 and 12 are breakdown of the grants that we received and how they were spent. Predominantly, it's entitlement grants, Title I, II, III, REAP, IDEA and some robotics grants. Page 13 is summary of E-rate that we received that is spent for technology services. We have about $20,000 at the end of the year in E-rate, which we will use this year to help offset some of the unanticipated costs. Page 14 is a summary of the expendable trust fund balances as of June 30th. C facilities is at 583.9. We did add another $100,000 to that this past district meeting, so that was transferred in July into the account, which increased the balance. But as of June 30th, in special ed is about 212. The multifunctional bus was at 20,000. Small balance left in playground or from, leftover from when we redid the elementary school playground and the health, which we did not access. And finally, page 15 are other restricted revenues. Those are donations that have specific purposes and where those stand. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Now, sir, opportunity to give your questions to Trish. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Correspondence, superintendent, board secretary, board members.
None. In your packet, attachment five, just so that you're aware, the school approval process, which does typically include a content review and a facility review. We are actually, all three of our schools are up for the facility review portion. The state is lacking resources at this time to do the content review, so this is to make sure that you're meeting minimum standards. So it is certainly, Mr. Swanker is working very hard with each principal to ensure that we will be ready for Ms. Schu, Schoonmaker on the 27th of October for her visit and to ensure that we are in compliance, as well as, I guess she's here also on the 26th. So she'll be spending two of her, two days in Interlakes the last, towards the last week of the month.
And she'll be going to all?
To each school.
Each school. Okay, moving on. Once again, we're going to do a nomination, and if people do have specific questions, we can do those in a non-public at the end of the regular meeting. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Patrick Lefernier as special ed teacher at the Interlakes Middle High School for 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Moved by Mark, seconded by.
Seconded?
Oh, seconded by Duncan, then, yep. Mary, do you want to?
This is to fill a vacancy that was shared with the board last month. And we are appreciative that Mr. Lefernier brings experience and excitement to be in Interlakes.
Any questions from the board? Okay. All those in favor? Looks to be unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, item B, motion to approve leave of absence as presented. Once again, we'll do the motion first. Who would like to make the motion? Charlie? Seconded by Craig. Okay, do you want to discuss this a little bit?
So this would be supported under family medical leave?
Yes. It's, we kind of have to do it. Okay, all those in favor? Looks to be unanimous. Okay, next item. Motion to approve the COVID-19 handshake agreement with ILEA and ILSSA as will be presented.
So moved.
Moved by Lisa. Seconded by Nancy. You want to speak for us, Mary?
I did distribute this evening the ILSSA version. So what we have tried to do, you know, throughout our plans as we developed to open was to make sure we were engaging collaboratively to try to problem solve and to work together. There are just a few adjustments, you know, that make sense to the collective bargaining agreements, as well as some recognition in the ILSSA that we do have some paraeducators working in some very direct contact in recognizing that with a one-time stipend to, to acknowledge the level of difficulty that they experience in their work. And in addition, it does put a pause on the evaluation system, except for people who are new to us, so that this will allow more time for administration to be able to, quite frankly, deal with the daily operations of managing a school during a pandemic. It has been, I think, a productive conversation. The bullets outline the various aspects and certainly can answer any questions or why something was proposed, if that would be helpful.
And I'd like to make a comment that Mary went out of her way to really change the nature of the discussion between the two associations to, and you'll notice that she very creatively called this a gentle handshake. She was, we used to have memorandums of understanding, or what's the other term they use? Memorandum of agreement. And sometimes we felt like we were basically in negotiations. And Mary very creatively put this into a framework where it really turned out to be very amicable. And it was, Mark and I kind of sat with the, the two teams. And it was a very productive exercise, and I think the two associations would say the same thing. And I just think it was a nice twist, and I wanted to give Mary credit for that because it was very unusual. And I don't think many schools do that. We did have an initial proposal from the ILSSA that was not in a gentle handshake form. And we let the association know that really, we can just leave things the way they are. And they rather quickly came back and we had a very amicable resolution, so. Mary and, Mary and I or Mark can answer any questions you might have.
And I do just want to say, I think the ILSSA, you know, this was new territory for everybody. I don't think there was any intention. I just
No, there wasn't.
maybe the guidance received was.
The guidance received.
And, you know, I, I think people very much want to work together.
Yes.
That, I think, is the reality.
I think that's a good way of putting it. It was the guidance that was received.
It's also the recognition that we're asking our staff to go above and beyond.
Right. It was a, I guess you could call it the old win-win. Or, we tried to make it a win-win.
And it is unusual in, whenever you have a CBA, collective bargaining agreement type of arrangement, which typically run three or four years. The key to this document, over and above the recognition of what our staff is doing, is that this document is effective through June 30th of 2021. MOUs have the ability to just be considered rolling agreements.
Agreements.
This is not a rolling agreement. It's a recognition of the environment we are in.
So. Yes, Nancy?
Yeah, can I just say, I think this is, I think this is a, and exhibits a wonderful recognition for teachers and flexibility on the part of the administration and school board. And I, I just think it's a really good way to acknowledge all of the extra things that the special ed staff, you know, those are the kids who are most vulnerable to having a really difficult time with this pandemic, and they. a really difficult time with this pandemic, and they, so those folks are dealing with, they deal with more complicated issues anyway, but to acknowledge all of this, I think, is really, really wonderful. So I do strongly support this, but thank you for everyone who's been working on it.
Okay, do we have any other comments or questions, Craig?
I have some questions, I guess. You mentioned the stipend, but I can't find it in the document.
So it's on the document that was handed out tonight. So the ILSSA, we met on Friday afternoon, which is why it wasn't included in the initial So it is $1,000 stipend for paraeducators who are fully assigned to the preschool program, the personal and academic life skills program, which is at ILES, the life skills program, which goes from grade seven through age 21, speech and nurse assistants.
Okay, do we know what the total cost of that is?
So there are about 20 people in that group.
Okay, so in the document that was handed out this evening...
That is not included on that document.
That's not included, okay. And then you mentioned nurse assistants, we hired a nurse, is that a nurse assistant or is that not?
No, there are at ILES and at the middle high school, each nurse does have a nurse assistant who works directly with them. So we do not have a nurse assistant out in Sandwich, we just have a nurse. So there are two nurse assistants.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Looks like it's unanimous.
Thank you for your support.
Where am I?
D.
B?
D as in David.
Okay. Oh, yeah, right. School calendar adjustments.
So attachment seven, I am proposing some considerations for changing the calendar. November 6th has been scheduled as a conference day for parents, guardians, teachers. It's difficult to do conferences right now. Google Meet is certainly an option, but to do, you know, that many Google Meets becomes, it just, there is a level of virtual fatigue that is a reality. In addition, we have asked a lot of our staff, we have, you know, last spring, when we jumped into remote learning at that, you know, point in time, we were, you know, we were finding our way. We didn't have clear expectations of what that should look like at that point, because it was so new to us. We did a lot of learning through that experience. We have worked to really identify what are those critical components to have in a online environment. We are also implementing, you know, a new learning management system to support that work. So that time to be really more for professional learning makes sense. We also had kind of a staggered start to the school year, so we're not as far into the year, so conferences feel a little mistimed to have on the 6th. We certainly would have teachers connect with any families that they are concerned with, but that is one proposal. Then there are two other dates that I would like to ask the board's consideration. November 30th is a teacher work day for pre-K to 6. That is, within the collective bargaining agreement, teachers have a day that is either for doing reporting learning progress, or at the high school level, it is typically a transition between semesters. So we have split that day in, over time, to better meet the needs of each level, but I am asking that the board would consider having the 30th be, rather than a school day for 7/12, that would provide another day of support for teachers as they, again, transition. We are asking people to do some pretty significant changes, and then the same would be the case for elementary. So the 6th is already a day that students were not scheduled in, the 30th would be adding a no-school day for 7/12, and the 22nd would be adding a no-school day for pre-K to 6. Yes.
At that point?
Did I? I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, we all want 2020 to disappear at that point. And I can certainly answer any questions you may have on that request.
Mr. Chairman, I do, on the November 6th, without the parent-teacher conferences, I guess, how between now and then do we make sure the teachers get together with parents in some form to, so the parents know where their students are at? Whether it's a little note that everybody gets or something?
Yeah.
How would we do that, so that we can make sure that we're still communicating with the parents about the status of their child in the school?
So in terms of, like, at the 7/12 level, there's quite a bit of contact with families relative to, you know, tracking student progress throughout. In terms of the portal into Alma, they're able to look at student grades. Certainly at the elementary level, we can ask teachers to, you know, I think, indicate somehow to families that students are meeting expectations, or if there's an area of concern. We can, we can certainly, I don't want to put progress reports necessarily as an additional level on teachers, but I think somehow of making sure that, I think, if there's a area of concern, that that concern is being relayed. That is most critical.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I guess I do, just, this is general, but you mentioned Alma and, you know, how do we know that the teachers are updating the systems, so the parents have a real-time view of assignments and grades? Do we have a tracking mechanism for that?
So certainly administrators can go in and look at Alma and see what's being reported. I think sometimes concerns are, you know, if a concern is raised by a family, that, you know, might draw the attention to see what that reporting is looking like. Mr. Curry, progress reports, they're, this trimester, have you done progress report, or this, I should say, quarter? So generally speaking, there is, within a quarter, there is, you know, a certain point, again, that parents are getting like a mid-quarter progress report, but because we've kind of had this delayed start, that didn't happen at this stage. But in terms of, you know, notification to teachers as we're heading towards progress reports, is making sure that things are updated on a regular basis. And again, if a concern is raised, it's certainly followed up on.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's just important to me, we're all focused on COVID and how to keep kids safe, but really, our mission is to make sure the kids are educated. So I want to make sure that we're communicating correctly with the parents, and the parents know where their students stand, their children stand.
Yeah.
Thank you, Craig, for that reminder. I think we needed sometimes. This is just a discussion item, so. Moving on. Summer wellness encumbrance, this will be a motion. Motion to approve the summer wellness encumbrances extension and adjustment as will be presented. Moved by Charlie, seconded by Mark. Mary?
So if you recall, the board was very supportive of summer wellness, which was certainly well-received. You know, wellness continues to be a concern throughout this year, certainly for staff as well. Being able to have some funds to support efforts like we've had Lynn Lyons, who does help with anxiety, being able to, you know, potentially, if we were to look at maybe winter athletics shifting in some way, this might be, support some clubs. It really, to have those funds to be able to extend through the rest of the school year and potentially next summer would be beneficial.
Any questions for Mary? Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Next, we have a motion to accept the donation as presented or will be. Mary, do you want to speak just a few seconds on that?
So again, we are very fortunate to live in the community we live in. Hannaford Helps Schools has raised $4,174 to support student activities at Interlakes Elementary School. Thank you, Hannaford.
Okay, moved and seconded by Craig. All those in favor? Athletics, I think we dealt with that.
I think so.
New Hampshire retirement. Employee contribution rates, didn't we deal with that too?
We talked about it.
Yeah.
We talked about it before the meeting started.
What's that?
I believe we had a conversation before the meeting.
I do too, okay. We didn't talk about the rental agreement. Mary, do you want to?
Certainly. So as you know, we do, the Interlakes School District owns the Homestead building and rents the upper floor to the Lakes Region Planning Commission. They have very good tenants. The rental agreement, we had hoped last year to do some work on looking at the extension of that agreement. Quite frankly, COVID-19 interrupted our process around that, and our recommendation at this point, quite frankly, to do any kind of analysis on comps and so forth, really, at this point, does not feel manageable with all the other things that are going on. So our recommendation would be to extend the contract out two years. Realistically, again, we're probably, you know, this year not going to be able to do that, and they do need, you know, some kind of commitment.
Do we want this as a motion that's not listed, but I think?
I, I was doing it, well, it certainly can be a motion if the board would like to approve that, or if you want to certainly consider it on the 27th, that's certainly an option.
I think we could...
It's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer, yes. So could I have a motion? Moved by Craig, seconded by Mark.
The only thing I would add is you have a little bit enabled with construction going on.
Yes.
Which would probably not help curb appeal if you were to go out onto the market. That being said, a two-year contract for that construction work to get finished may provide a benefit to its market value two years from now.
Absolutely.
Point.
Okay, any other further comments? Okay, all those in favor of accepting this agreement?
Thank you. They are great tenants, great neighbors, I should say.
And they do a lot of good work. Policy, no action, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, can I interrupt on that one?
Yes.
I'm sorry, in our previous, I, that wasn't fast enough. Previously, in the state inspection, there was a bullet point about the board, and the last time we reviewed a policy about air quality and other things. Are we, do we know when that happened and all that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, I didn't hear your comment, Craig.
And previously in this meeting, there was, in the docket for the state inspection, right, there was a bullet point about the school board having to review a policy on air quality and other things. And I just want to make sure that we have that and we've reviewed it and we're okay, you have the evidence you need.
We do, we do have the air quality policy in place. It's under the business section of our policies. We are in compliance with all of the policies that are needed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The policy committee will need to reconvene shortly, now that we can hopefully stabilize since opening. There are definitely some policies that I think do need addressing, but not relative to indoor air quality.
Okay, moving on. Additional business, members of the board.
Can I just make a paid advertisement for the school?
Yes.
Started working with Everett Bennett, Everett and I, and Richard joined us, went for a hike. This is all around the outdoor curriculum that is being assembled for the outdoor classrooms down on Page, something I support 150% on, and the, I don't know what you're calling, the task force that is putting that curriculum together, but they're meeting again, I'm going to join them on Thursday.
We are hoping to have K through 8 in the district get to Page between October 19th and the 30th. So certainly, we will get that schedule out. If you would love to, you know, come and see some learning in action, we would love to have you, and everything will be physically distant. We, Everett Bennett is helping to lead that charge. He has such a skilled way of developing very meaningful field experiences, and, you know, we were talking today just how rich that property is, and it is so close to us. And so, you know, we won't be going to Cape Cod this year or New York City, but we will be going a couple miles down the road and having, I think, a fantastic experience.
Charlie?
I'm just curious, Mary, as a corollary, have we, have the schools been using the Labyrinth Nature Trail much since it opened?
Quite a bit. I will say, you know, I call it the lemonade of the, this year, is the amount of outdoor time we've had. People have really been taking advantage of that. You know, kids have said that, you know, that this is ma, being outdoors has made it a much more positive experience, being at school in general. And it's great to see that we've been able to take care of it. We've also had the good fortune of some incredible weather, and I'm hoping over the next, you know...
Looks good, looks good.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping it holds.
Thank you. And I would just like to give some recognition to Mark for the work that he has done in, really, the development of the whole Page, Palm, Stages 1 and 2, and his enthusiasm for the environment and outdoor education. Mark invited me to come, and I was just so impressed with Mark's knowledge, with, Everett gave a pretty good idea of what was going to take place, and I think we had, who do we have there?
Paul Dillon.
Yeah, Paul Dillon, former member of the Meredith Police Department, lieutenant from 10 years ago. He was there and he was involved. It was just, and we had beautiful weather, and I just, I've driven by there a thousand times going to Lisa's house, but it was just a wonderful afternoon, and it, and Mark has been a real pusher of connecting this school district to outdoor education and the environment, and now couldn't be a better time, because now the two needs are coming together, what we should be doing and now what we really need to be doing to really make our education a little bit more meaningful and also a little safer. So Mark, thank you for everything you've done. And you'll be getting a $5 gift certificate to Dollar Tree. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that the board consider for the school calendar proposed adjustment, at least making a decision about the conferences, because the 6th is right around the corner and having...
Yes, was that as a...
And I apologize, I probably should have put that as a motion, so that is attachment seven. I, the others' dates can certainly be considered at a later time, but the conferences would be helpful for planning purposes to know if the board is comfortable with that adjustment.
I think we are. Could somebody make a motion for that? Charlie and Mark? Okay. We need a vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous?
I think. What's that? I can't. I can't hear, and then my glasses fog, so I feel a little.
I feel like I fog and I don't even have glasses on.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay. Final public input. Okay.
Two.
Two.
All right. Well, I'll lead off. This is in regards to the Virtual Pathway School, and this is from Lindsey Weiner. Just a quick shout out to Ms. Bannon and Ms. Tottola, who are doing a fabulous job with the K2 Virtual Pathway. I realize that this is a huge undertaking and really appreciate how they are making our kids' experience as normal as possible under the circumstances. Mrs. Bannon and Ms. Tottola have gone out of their way to make things interactive and fun for our kids, and I really appreciate it. Furthermore, both of my kids are learning and growing, and it is exciting to be able to witness the process.
Well, thank you for that comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, as a parent in the Virtual Pathway, second that wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, where was the other one? Go ahead. Yeah, take it all.
Oh, I'm sorry for the, for everyone else. In terms of your note of, your ability to, I can't even get my words out, I'm sorry. When you get notified of COVID cases in the area, is that a statewide alert system or?
So.
And I guess before I hang up, the, for something like a sports team for a case to be detected, how then do we map that to whether our team was in contact with that team and the frequency of the reports and things like that?
Sure. So there is a COVID-19 dashboard on our website, which does actually have all of the, all of the team meetings. We take notes and we include the data that actually Dr. Hill and Dr. Stanton, they have a public health background, they're not medical doctors, but they did work previously for John Hopkins. They are Moulton Borough residents who have graciously given us their gifts and talents, and they have kind of pulled data for us from, the state does have a pretty interactive COVID dashboard that does also include school data on that. And so they do pull for Belknap County, for Carroll County and Grafton County. We look at those three counties as well as look at the state data. Relative to how do we get notified if there is, you know, if our sports teams have been maybe impacted? What happened on Saturday is my phone rang and it was the superintendent of this other district. You know, locally, we have, you know, we have each other's contact to be able to do that, letting us know that they'd had an athlete and that, you know, we had been on the schedule. In addition, the athletic directors had already had some previous conversation about potentially siblings being, you know, and prior to maybe that athlete being identified. So there seems to be good communication happening. It's not, it's not an alert from the state that happened. What did get triggered is I contacted Department of Health and Human Services as a result of that phone call. They were in the process of doing their research relative to the other situation. And then, you know, eventually it seemed like all roads finally met. And what they did tell, you know, tell me is that they needed some time to do contact tracing. We had already decided that they would most likely need time and had asked parents to plan on Tuesday as being a day not in attendance at school. So today I was able to receive the call back from DHHS that they had done their analysis with the athletic director and so forth to see how much play that student had, where that student was positioned, what might have been the potential interaction. So it's, it seems like an arduous task that DHHS has. When I spoke with the individual on the phone, he said they started the day with 800 contact tracing calls to make, and they were ending the day, I think, with 850. So I, I think it's, you know, I think it's a lot of making sure that we're all connecting with each other locally so that there's time for the other end, the state end, to catch up with us too. Well, I think what I will say is the data is, at least, the data is available, but it's not, you have to go accessing the data. And I think our process, you know, we're constantly reviewing it, and certainly the weekly meeting is another way of kind of bringing that data all together and having many minds look at it. But it is like the, you know, a school having a confirmed case, there is no like alert that's going out about that. You have to monitor the low, the state website and see if anything has shown up there. I think, again, for people that we're connected with, we have a lot of connections, so we are alerted, but it's not through a state, you know, emergency phone call out to everybody.
I think my concern would be if that superintendent hadn't called you.
I think the athletic directors would have connected. But I think we have a, what I will say is I think DHHS, again, would have been late to call.
Right.
I don't think I would have heard from DHHS until maybe Monday.
Which might have been.
You know, if we were in school, that would have been potentially too late. And I know some of that is they are waiting to get results and, you know, it, again, seems like a pretty arduous task.
And the information that they're providing us. Seven-day rolling averages, 14-day rolling averages, charts going back to June and earlier.
Yeah.
That is our proactive approach to it because it is their analysis that we look to as to whether or not we need to change where we are.
That's correct, but an individual school districts that may or may not encounter a positive type reading, it does seem, in my opinion, maybe a little too loose in that we're just hoping that the athletic director or the superintendent will get in touch.
Well, I, you know, we're certainly keeping in close contact with those that we play.
Okay.
I think what I'm saying is you're looking for that data versus that data being pushed out to you as an alert. But we are, we are reviewing that data to make sure. And again, I do think the relationships are established too, that there is that collaboration.
Thank you. I just want to ask our two remote members, is the sound and the visual images clear for you people?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we heard everything.
Good.
Yep.
You were able to, because for us sitting here, it's been perfect. You're, you know, we've heard you crystal clear and, you know, it's just been a very, much better than it has been for our remote COVID meetings. They haven't been quite as good, so.
I would, I would like to say one thing about the sports, though. Obviously, this can change with the drop of a hat. We don't, we just have to stay on top of it every single day because it changes that quickly.
Good point. Okay. Announcements. Next meeting, Tuesday, October 27, 2020. Here, same location, same time. And the next meeting will, after that, would be November 10, 2020. Same meeting, same time. I don't think it's listed here, but somewhere in this timeframe, there's probably going to be an SAU meeting.
We need to work to get one scheduled.
Okay. So Lisa and Mary will be working on that.
Do we know where that would be? Like, it would be in the Ashland area or will it be over in here?
I think, you know, there's, I'm thinking this environment, the auditorium seems to be a pretty good setup, and then it certainly would afford for people to be able to join remotely, but that's certainly something that Ms. Merrill and I can, can work to find what's the most comfortable.
That's a big woman, Ashland, we use too, is the cafeteria.
Yeah, I think the technology of trying to remote in and everything is easier than trying to make a cafeteria that may not have the same access.
Okay, it's, it's Lisa's magic time.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mark. All those in favor of adjournment? Oh, Greg wants to stay on. No, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.